Good evening and welcome to the probably final board meeting for the 2014-15 school year. I said probably, you never know. The, for Wednesday, June the 24th, 2015. I'd like to welcome everyone and call the meeting to order. I'd like to remind everyone, if you have something that makes noise or rings or barks or tweets, please mute it, silence it, take it home. I'd also like to remind everyone that we're video voice recorded and we are live on the web, so we are broadcasting. I know there could be people listening in from Newfoundland and other parts of Ontario. So.
Where's eight o'clock?
Where's eight o'clock? No, it'd be earlier, later. So I'd like to, everyone is here. Trustee Papin will be arriving later, she's at a graduation. So, can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by trustee Reynolds, seconded by trustee Gray. All those in favor? I think the student trustees still need to log in, but. That, okay, that passes unanimously, thank you. Are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest tonight? Seeing none, we have no delegations or presentations, so we'll move on to the minutes of the regular board meeting from June the 17th. Do I have any, a motion to approve? Trustee Gray, seconded by trustee Reynolds. Any discussion on the minutes from the June 17th meeting? Sorry, I'm just going to speaker control to make sure. Okay, so, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, thank you. So, are we are up to approval of business transacted in private session, and I know there's at least one thing.
We have two items this evening. The first is be it resolved at the Halton District School Board, approve the resolutions from private session regarding the food services contract, and I so move.
Do I have a second, or trustee Gerbence? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, thank you very much. The next?
And the second motion, be it resolved at the Halton District School Board, appoint Jacqueline Newton as superintendent of education with terms and conditions detailed in a contract parallel to existing superintendents with duties to commence on August 24th, 2015, and I so move.
Seconded by trustee Daniele. All those, any discussion? Trustee Gerbence.
I just wanted to say that I'm extremely happy for Jacqueline Newton. I, I think she's going to do a wonderful job. I will however miss her as a principal over at Dr. Frank J. Hayden.
Thank you. And seeing no other speakers, all those in favor? Sorry, it was me. That passes unanimously, thank you very much. Too many buttons to push. Okay, is there anything else from private session? Not this evening, okay, thank you. We're now up to our order paper, is there any discussion on our order paper tonight?
I'm, I'm sorry, I did forget one motion from private session.
Okay, we're going to step back to private session.
Motion is regarding the director's performance review, and for the second year in a row, he has achieved a level of exceeds expectations, and I so move.
Waiting for it to update. Previous, 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 no, not yet. Technology's wonderful, we always have to. There it is. Okay, moved by vice chair Collard, seconded by trustee Oliver. Any discussion? Seeing none? Wait a sec, I didn't check speaker control, okay, seeing none? All those in favor? I did push it twice. That passes unanimously, and congratulations, director.
Thank you.
Okay, so, order, we're back to the order paper. Are there any comments or questions on the order paper tonight? Nope, seeing none? Okay, we're up to our action items. The first action item is program viability report, associate Miller, report 15081. Associate Miller. Yeah. That works, I was told, but the student trustees say that works, so. When you're ready.
Thank you trustees, I don't have much, in fact, I don't really have anything to, to provide to you other than what we spoke about last, last board meeting. I would just emphasize again, and I said it the last thing, because I, I have had some correspondences to me, as I know some of you around the table have had some correspondences around this issue, I'm emphasizing that this is step one in the process. This is about going to the public and hearing the public's ideas, their considerations, and we've provided them with these four options, a framework with which to do that on. They may or may not agree with these options, or they may have hybrids of these options, our intent is to listen to them all. We believe, the committee believes strongly that it was important to provide some skeletal framework, or maybe even more than a skeletal framework, for some options for people to consider. So, I, I, I'm just emphasizing that this is a step in the process, this is not the culmination of the process. As you, the trustees, know that you will be ultimately making the decision on the culmination, and I think we're looking at some significant public consultations, we had our, we had a meeting today around that, and started developing the, the process that we will use, and much of that was a result of the input we received last week, we haven't come to anything obviously, and it will come to the board prior to going to the public, and you will have another opportunity to provide input for that, and it will also go to the committee. So, I know that some of you have had some of these concerns brought to you, and I, I know that in some cases lobbying has begun, and people are lobbying for positions. As I said last week, we are going to try to get honest and appropriate feedback and consultation that is not lobbying, information that will help trustees ultimately make a final, information that will help us make a final recommendation that will then help the trustees make a final decision. So, that's about all I have to say right now, and then I'm open for questions.
So I'm going to read the motion first. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board present the following options for the delivery of French immersion to the public in the fall of 2015 for the purpose of receiving feedback, considerations, and comments. Feedback will be brought to the board for consideration in the delivery of French immersion programming. One, option one, grade one, early, French immersion remains a 50% French, 50% French, 50% English delivery model, but entry to FI will be capped. The method of capping would be determined at a later date. Two, option two, grade one, early, French immersion remains at 50% French and 50% English, however, all FI programs will be delivered in a single-track FI schools. French immersion will be phased out of dual-track schools, and no dual-track schools will be considered. The location of the single-track schools will be determined at a later date. Three, option three, French immersion will commence at a later entry point, mid-entry, grade four. This will result in the delivery model of FI moving with, from a 50% model to at least an 80% French immersion model. In addition, the delivery of FI will occur in dual-track schools only. Four, option four, French immersion will commence at a later entry point, mid-entry, grade four. This will result in the delivery model of FI moving from a 50% model to at least an 80% French immersion model. In addition, the delivery of FI will occur in single-track FI schools only. So, do I have a mover? Trustee Oliver, seconded by trustee Graves. Is there, there is some discussion on this recommendation one, I'll read recommendation two separately. Trustee Oliver.
Through you chair, to trustees, as member of the program viability committee, I do wish to echo associate Miller's comments, and I, I do want to stress that this is, I mean, we all recognize, this is a very complex, difficult, challenging issue that requires a great deal of thought and research and analysis to arrive at a really solid viable model for delivery of the French immersion program while ensuring the sustainability and viability of English program. And so, we will be encouraging solid public consultation. I'm challenging and asking the members of the public to give this a lot of thought. What we're proposing are the obvious options, and I'm sure that there must be other creative things, other models of delivery that can be brought forward for our consideration. And so I'm hoping that we will be able to achieve that through a public consultation process and move forward with planning for, for this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you, through you, ma'am chair, to associate director Miller. I have a couple of comments that have been floating around, I haven't been lobbied as far as options, what I've been is, people coming up and asking me for more information so that they can spend the summer kind of digging through the options and, and understanding the scenarios. One of the things that I determined was that the previous French study information and all of the stuff that we had from that isn't necessarily as easy to find on the website as it should be. And then there's the research that is referred to in this program viability committee report, and whether or not people then could go and access some of the research that helped shape some of the options that are here. And also, I would hope that the capping options that say at a later date, I really do not like passing a motion that says, these are the options that we're going to put out there, and the later date, it's not clear that the later date is with the consultation or after the consultation, so I believe you said last week it would be part of what goes out, but I just want to make sure that we nailed that down, that, that we will not be asking people to, to, to give us feedback on option one of capping until we actually give them the options for the capping, because that will skew how they give us feedback, because some capping ideas are more, I don't know, they're different. I had a question, the, the option two has reference to natural capping due to single track, the, the schools only using single track, and I wondered how only having single track, you think that's a natural capping, because if a child wants to show up at grade one at a single-track school now, I'm not aware that we've ever said no.
Through you, Chair Amos, trustee Harvey Hope, a couple of comments about the research in the website. I, I mean, we, I, I can't speak to the website, but we can certainly look at that, around that French study, for sure. In terms of the research, I, you know, we can post things, I'm not sure that's what people would want, per se, because there's tons of research that they can access on the internet, on all sorts of these issues. And some of these things are in the public domain, like the, the New Brunswick Task Force, et cetera, and so on, but having said that, certainly look at it, for sure. Around your comments around the capping, yeah, we haven't put the specific capping in here, because there's two parts about capping. Capping can be considered a concept, and clearly the concept is to control uptake of French immersion. How we implement capping, or the control of uptake French immersion, there are different ways to cap. So our intent would be to present to the public the different methods for capping. Ultimately, if capping was chosen, and I am not at all, and I'm emphasizing that for the public, at all presupposing the outcome of this, the clear method of capping would be presented to the trustees that was going to be used. But we would certainly be inviting comments on both capping as a concept and the methods of capping. Your last question, I've forgotten. Oh, so how single-track French immersion is, a natural capping method is, when the school is full, it's full, and so therefore no other kids get in, so you have a catchmentary. I, I'm not talking about the present situation, I'm talking about, once the school is full, it's, it's, it's full, so if, if you're at capacity, how we, we're unable to add more
Clarify, please. So are you, if, if a school had space for four classes of grade one, would you suggest that the 82nd child wouldn't get to go to the school? Is that, is that what you mean by natural capping? Because that, the concept is very new.
Yes, it would mean, sorry, through your chair, Mr. Trustee Harvey Hope, if the 82nd kid required us to put a portable on site, or an additional portable beyond, if we were already at capacity, the answer is yes.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you, through the chair, Amos, to associate director Miller. I want to thank him for his introductory comments tonight regarding this very important document and, and the process that we're about to embark upon. I, I'm encouraged by the positive comments made with regards to the recognition of the public wishing to be involved in the consultation process, because early, all early indications reflect abundant interest by the public, and so the development of a very inclusive consultation process is critical. So I want to thank you and the members of the committee for already beginning your work to ensure that the consultation process will be quite extensive and, and thorough.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
I just wanted to thank you for bringing this forward, and for bringing it forward early enough in the process that parents do have three or four months in, in order to think about these options before we then go to them for consultation. I know that we are going to engage in a very extensive and meaningful consultation with the public, and that the public will be heard on this issue, and that gives me a, a lot of confidence in my role then to be making decisions at this table, to know what the, what the public opinion on this is. So thank you very much for all your work on this.
May I comment, Chair Amos? Thank you to vice chair Collard and trustee Gray. I will tell you this, although we have not fully developed the consultation process, it will include social media, it will include surveys, it will include focus groups, it will involve school councils and school, school areas, I guess, and region areas, so it will be an extensive consultation process, so.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I too echo the, the comments of my fellow trustees, saying thank you very much for putting together a consultation step, and, and giving people time to go through it, which is why some of the parents are saying, you know, I've got time in the summer, I just want to start, you know, looking around at this stuff. And also, when the, the document says, you know, X, Y, Z, they just would like to know sort of where, where some of the research that that particular statement is, is sort of coming from. My, I, two questions, one is, why is core French primary hours not included in the hours you need? And I'm wondering whether that could maybe be brought, comes, brought into the consultation document explaining the hours and the intensity, so when you flesh out option number, whatever it is, about the three and four, about why that doesn't count? I, I don't need an answer tonight, I'm just saying that should probably be in, in the flushed out. And also, I'm wondering whether the, maybe it seems nitpicky, but the, the options motion uses all wills, and I'm wondering, since this is a consultation document, and it's asking about options, it actually should be, this option would do this and would do that, rather than will, because will sounds like done, and would sounds like, if we pick this option, this is what it would look like, and, and it just seems to be a little softer language, and I wonder whether that would be appropriate.
Through your chair, Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope, I have absolutely no problem with having those changed, so I guess they would have to be changed up.
Because the motion has already been read, we'll need an amendment to substitute will with would, so are you moving that, trustee Harvey Hope?
I would like to, please, because this is going to be sitting on the order paper for quite a while, and it'll probably be the foundation of the consultation document.
And do I have a second, or trustee Gerbence? Is there any discussion on the amendment from will to would?
Sure. And it's all options. Option one, entry to FI would be capped. Option two, would be delivered, would be considered. Option three, this would result in the delivery model. Option four, French immersion would commence, and this would result. And then probably the last one, the last sentence as well, I think has a would in it. Some of the wills are okay, but the ones, you know.
So all wills will be would in the recommendations, in the options? Any, trustee Harrison, are you, did you want to speak to that, or were you speaking to the whole motion? If you would like to speak to that, then feel free.
Okay, sure thing. So through you, Chair Amos, I just, I think it's a great enhancement to the motion. What I heard you say, associate director Miller, is that we're not presupposing the outcomes of the process, and I think that's a really critical part, that people need to hear us say that, and that we are welcoming of that feedback genuinely, and that, you know, the answer at the end of the day may be option one, two, three, or four, or it may be option five, six, seven, or eight, so I think it's great that a consultation program is being developed around that piece. So I thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Graves, this is to the amendment? Okay. So, we're now voting on the amendment from all the options from, going from will to would. All those in favor? Yes, I got it? So that passes unanimously, thank you very much. So I have a question, do you need me to reread it? Thank you. Oh, I do? Okay. All right, I need to read it for the record, you'll have to indulge me, I'm sorry. So, the recommendation one, be it resolved, the Halton District School Board present the following options for the delivery of French immersion to the public in the fall of 2015 for the purpose of receiving feedback, considerations, and comments. Feedback will be brought to the board for consideration in the delivery of French immersion programming. Option one, early, or grade one, early, French immersion remains a 50% French, 50% English delivery model, but entry to FI would be capped. The method of capping would be determined at a later date. Option two, grade one, early, French immersion remains at a 50% French and 50% English, however, all FI programs would be delivered in single-track FI schools. French immersion would be phased out of dual-track schools, and no dual-track schools would be considered. The location of the single-track schools would be determined at a later date. Option three, French immersion would commence at a later entry point, mid-entry, grade four. This would result in the delivery model of FI moving from a 50% model to at least an 80% French immersion model. In delivery, in addition, the delivery of FI would occur in dual-track schools only. Option four, French immersion would commence at a later entry point, mid-entry, grade four. This would result in the delivery model of FI moving from a 50% model to at least an 80% French immersion model. In addition, the delivery of FI would occur in single-track FI schools only. And that was moved by trustee Oliver, and seconded by trustee Graves, and I believe trustee Graves wanted to speak to the motion. Trustee Graves? You're on the list. There you go. I'm, okay, there you go.
Just a question regarding option number four. It's not clear in the, in the motion, but it's elaborated on in the report, and I didn't, apologies, I didn't think of it until just now. But really what we're bringing here is, is not two capping and two not capping, but we're really bringing three capping options to the board, and that was not my understanding coming out of, coming out of that committee, is that we are coming with two capping options and two non-capping options. So, I guess I'm, I'm just wondering through, through you, chair to associate director Miller, is that, I mean, if, if it's going to be capping, I think we should be clear in the motion that option number four is a caption, a, a, a capping option, and if it's not, then it should be clear in the report that it's not, because I think we can deliver programs in single-track and dual-track schools, both with and without capping, so I think there's just a bit of ambiguity there that might need to be cleared up.
Through your chair, Amos, to trustee Graves, although we have said option two is a form of capping because it's single-track FI, and option four is a form, or could be a form of capping because it too is single-track FI, the, the, there is, I think, a stark difference between that and, and options one and three. One and three is clear, it's capping, we're controlling the uptake of French immersion by saying X number of students in these classes. With the other two, if they became tabs, it would be a much larger number of uptake that would be allowed in, be, just because it's about the size of the school as opposed to a class, or two classes of FI, or whatever, and, and, and some of that would be dependent on the way the school itself is organized. So, for example, in option four, say it was a single-track FI school we were developing, and we're talking about mid-entry, students enter in grade four, but our schools currently are SK, JK to eight, some of them. Those kids in grades one, two, and three, we'd have to make a decision, the board, sorry, would have to make a decision whether we go one, two, three in English, then kids go French immersion four to eight, or would they become grade four to eight schools? In which case, if it was a grade four to eight school, the number In which case, if it was a grade four to eight school, the number of French immersion kids that you can accommodate increases because those, those classes that we've now, no longer have grades one, two, and three, are filled by grades four, five, and whatever, right? So I don't disagree with you. Maybe it's not apparent, but it's not, it's, it's, it's only capping if capacity is reached. Otherwise, it's not capping. Capping in the other cases is we have created the capacity in terms of, like, to go back to trustee Harvey Hope's thing, question, we could indeed add portables to increase the number in. Say we had enough to do, you know, for argument's sake, pick an arbitrary number, an extra class, and we as a board determine that, you know what, an extra class, no big deal, let's add a portable. Whereas if we've got a hard, fast cap, we won't, we won't pierce that cap. So the difference may seem subtle, but I think there is a difference. I think there's quite a difference in terms of the total numbers, right? Because some of, some of four is contingent on whether we go to grade four to eight schools, or we go SK to eight, and SK, or JK to eight, JK, SK, one, two, three are all in English, and four to eight are French. So that would have to be a decision that's determined at the board, so. So, and it's, it's my understanding that that's what came out of the committee when we had the discussion, so. I, I'm, well, you know, the deliberations we had, so.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Also, just food for thought when you're generating the actual consultation document for the fall. One of the comments made to me in the last two weeks has been that although it is program viability, all of the solutions pointed out are all FI solutions to balance schools. And I'm wondering whether there could be at least some discussion on small rural schools, schools that are going to be in a situation where if the demography changes, you know, how the English viability looks like separate from the FI uptake kind of thing. There are going to be situations where promoting English viability has nothing to do with French immersion uptake. It may be related to other factors, and there is not even a paragraph on what we do in those situations, or what we plan on doing, or what is already in place, or that there is even situations like that. So I, Director Uwali.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment on that. Trustee is absolutely right that the program viability is a bigger issue than just this report. But program viability is also part of the LTAP, that we are to look at schools where the program and the number of students is insufficient to support the program. That should come out in our LTAP reports, because we report on schools that are overcrowded, and we also report on schools that are having a difficulty in providing program. In our rural settings, there's often little that we can do. And we're not terribly rural in Halton, but we do have some schools where the enrollment dips to a point where there is a program viability issue, and that's brought up in the LTAP. And then it's up to the board to decide whether to do an accommodation review in those areas to bolster the numbers, to make the program more viable. So the concept of program viability is not solely dealt with with this motion. It's, it is a concept dealt with in other areas.
Thank you. And seeing no other questions or comments, all those in favor of recommendation one as amended. Kelly, we don't have a speaker's list. I don't know if there's an issue with. There is an issue, so you have to actually look at the who's speaking and who's coming up next, so that will be rectified hopefully by the next board meeting in September. That passes unanimously. Thank you. So I'll read the second recommendation. Be resolved, the Halton District School Board initiate a community consultation feedback process with the process and the method of consulting and communicating to the public coming to the Board of Trustees before the end of September 2015 for information. Moved by trustee Oliver, seconded by trustee Graves. Is there any discussion on this recommendation? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Through you Madam Chair, I guess to the, probably the director. Is there a reason why this is for information and not for decision? A communication plan to the public?
Like to speak to it, Associate Director Miller?
Through you Chair Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope. I'm prepared to make it for a decision.
And, and if I could explain, my reasoning is just that it is, gets two kicks at the can, for starters, in that people get a little bit more than Friday to Wednesday to see it. And we're not suggesting that we would be making massive changes or anything, it's just that that way we've got a little bit more visibility on the topic.
Yeah, I'm, the associate is, is happy with the amendment for decision.
And because it's already been moved, we will have to have a motion to amend. Trustee Grabens and trustee Oliver. So the motion is to amend the, for information to decision. So is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none? Just a minute. Yep, nope, she's, she's working on it. She can only tell you so fast. Waiting for it to flash, it usually does. There it goes. Okay. So all those in favor of modifying information to decision? That passes unanimously, so I'm going to reread the motion. Be resolved, the Halton District School Board initiate a community consultation feedback process with the process and the method of consulting and communicating to the public coming to the Board of Trustees before the end of September 2015 for decision. And that was moved by trustee Oliver, seconded by trustee Graves. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none? Then all those in favor. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you very much for your report, Associate Director Miller. We will look forward to the next step in the next phase of plan. Yes, we will, actually. And so will you. Yeah, sure. You may be here. The next item is Truth and Reconciliation Report. Trustee L Harrison, report 15083 on page 26 of your board package. And before I read the motion, I believe there were some supplemental questions, and I'd like to invite Superintendent Obang up, as well as, I believe there was another gentleman who was coming up with you. If you would like to introduce your fellow.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. The, I think, I believe all trustees did receive the supplemental response to questions around the truth and reconciliation motion. There's lots of information there for you. I'd like to introduce to my right here, Stephen, before I do that, I actually want to acknowledge a tradition of presenting tobacco to, in thanks of your contributions to our country and our community. It's also a gift, because it is a gift for you to be here today to speak on the First Nations meeting, you at work that the board has done, and the board's continuous commitment to integrating this work in their policies, procedures, and practices. So with this, I present this to you. Megwich.
Ani, wo jo, se go, tanzi, o chaya, hi, hi. I give greetings in some of the different tongues of the different nations that have walked on this place that we call Turtle Island. I want to say chimigwich, first of all, for this opportunity to speak before you in a, in a good way. As I look around at the council here, it's, it's good to see such a strong council, so many women, to be honest. Because in a lot of Indigenous worldviews, a lot of the big decisions in all the communities were made by the women. And if I'm not mistaken, I think that there's 13 female trustees? Eleven? Eleven? Okay. And I also wanted to acknowledge the student trustees. It makes me happy to, to see you here. I'd start off by introducing myself, and there's a couple of teachings in that introduction. Stephen John Paquette Gishnikaj. I was born John Andrew Kimmawon, and I share that with you because I'm a victim of the adoption scoop of the 60s. Members of my family have been through the residential schools as well. My spirit name is Bamancee Bamat Windenase, which translates into he walks a good life. I'm a pipe carrier in my community, I've been gifted that by the elders. I'm a former Eagle Staff carrier. And also, I need to share this, is that I'm from the Ojibwe Nation, Makwado Dem is, is my clan, I'm of the Bear Clan. I'm a proud husband to a beautiful wife. I'm a proud father to beautiful girls that are in the Halton District School Board. And in, in that greeting there, I also want to acknowledge the trustees, and I want to acknowledge the principals, I want to acknowledge the people at the back of the room there. And in doing that, it's just not acknowledging you, but it's also acknowledging your ancestors. One of the teachings that I was given by my elders is that when we enter into a relationship with people, we just don't acknowledge the people in front of us. We acknowledge their ancestors. And so I want to acknowledge the ancestors of everyone in this room. I want to acknowledge the land that they came from, and the work that I always do. You know, I'm always about diversity and inclusion. And when we do our introductions, I always ask people, you know, who are you? Where do you come from? Where did your ancestors come from? That's important to me. I need to acknowledge that if I'm going to enter into a meaningful relationship with you. So I acknowledge that. And I acknowledge the journeys that they came to come into this land, you know, and to be partners. I'm also here to remind you that, you know, that we are all descendants of treaty people, you know? The First Nations, the Inuit, the Métis, non-Aboriginal people, anyone that works on Turtle, anyone that walks on Turtle Island, you know? We are all treaty people. And what we have to remember is, in those treaties, that they were built on mutual respect. And how do we develop that respect is through understanding each other, you know? And so in this motion that's coming forward before you, what I ask you is to return back to the spirit of those treaties. I ask you to understand who we are. We're not asking for much, we're asking for that respect. We're asking for that acknowledgement. I need to acknowledge that this meeting here, this evening, is taking place on the land, the first peoples of this country. A lot of people say that this area is the Mississaugas of New Credit, I acknowledge that, but I also acknowledge that there were many other nations. The area of Halton is, is wide, it's far, stretches out, that there was a lot of other First Nations that, that walked through this territory as well, and I acknowledge them. The reason why, why I'm here is, you know, it's, it's so important, as I say, my, I have two beautiful daughters that are in the school system. And I want to speak very highly to the good work that is being done. When we first came in here, within our first month, we had met this teacher, and she was very engaging and wanting to know about who my daughters were and everything like that. She even invited me into the class. I thought, wow, that was great. That was amazing. I was asked to give two presentations, to do two different classes. It was good, you know? And then we got a little involved and made some questions, and I found that there is an Aboriginal Education Council that's made up. And I was very proud of that, you know? And as I came in to be a part of that, that group of really strong people with great leadership, to find out the amazing work that they've been done, you know? And that work needs to be acknowledged in a formal way, you know? I'd ask that the good work that they do comes to in a formal way through reports. Because as an Aboriginal parent, if I go onto your website, I want to be able to see, you know, what work specifically have they done? You know? You need to be aware of that. I'd share with you in a good way, and you might not understand this, but I'll share this with you in a good way, is when, when we had our last meeting there, is that, you know, I'm very proud of my, my brother Nicholas Bertrand there. He was gifted with an eagle feather, and in our community. That's a very, very high responsibility. That doesn't come easy, you know? But it's because of the work that he's done, you know? And you need to understand that, and you need to be proud of that, you know? The work that I try to do here as part of that committee, it's not just for my daughters, you know? It's for the children of each, everyone in this room, you know? And our children's children. Our elders tell us that, elders tell us that when we do work, when we make decisions, we always make those decisions thinking seven generations ahead, you know? So the work that I do on that, that council, it's not just for me, and it's not just for my daughters, but it's for all our children, seven generations going forward, you know? So I'd, I'd ask you with a good heart to consider that motion that's put forward, because I would love, this is an opportunity, this is a gift to you, to be able to return to the spirit of those original treaties about respect. You know? We look up there, we value and respect relationships, okay? We talk about responsibility. We talk about ingenuity. This is an opportunity for the trustees here, you know, to practice that ingenuity. Don't be dragged into it. Realize that this is an opportunity, you know? Take that responsibility to build those relationships in a good way. And I'd just say that I'm certainly open to any questions, but I just wanted to share with you is that before I came here, I did pipe ceremony. And I asked all the ancestors and all the spirits, you know, to come sit and counsel with us. And that you hear my words in a good way. There's no anger, there's no bitterness here, you know? I want to offer that olive branch to you in a good way. I want to work with you. You know, we have in our, we have people in our community, and all you need to do is ask. They'll offer tobacco, you know? And it'll go a long way. It's about that respect. And so when I go home tonight, and I'm going to be with my two little daughters, you know, I'm going to get to tell them about this meeting, and I'm going to get to be able to tell them that I sat in front of wise people, you know, and they respected me, they listened to my words, you know? And I lay down tobacco, and I hope and pray, you know, that you listen to this motion that's being put forward. It'll do good for all of us. I say megwich, 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 megwich. Thank you.
Superintendent Obang, did you have something to add?
Yeah, just in conclusion, I just want to thank the board for allowing the, the voices of the people we serve to be heard through our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to say a megwich to Elder Steve Paquette, because we really value hearing your words tonight about this motion, and I'm now going to put it on the table. Where is the work of the National Truth and Reconciliation Commission, TRC, regarding residential schools in Canada? Concluded its work in June 2015, resulting in 94 far-reaching calls to action, including a number specifically focused on education. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board, one, foster and continue to develop a culture where all students gain knowledge of residential schools and their effects on Aboriginal communities of Canada, and see themselves as contributors to reconciliation. to reconciliation. Two, report annually on our actions. Three, at least annually during a board meeting, recognize the history of our area and give respect and honor to its First Peoples by including in the chair's welcome. We would like to acknowledge that we are on the traditional territory of the First Peoples. Four, correspond with the Ministry of Education, urging collaboration with Aboriginal communities and the Ontario Public School Board Association to include Treaty education, the history and legacy of residential schools, and the impact of the Indian Act in curriculum in a way that gives voice to First Peoples. Recognizing that this will take time, also requesting that the ministry immediately provide school boards with resources to develop and share best practices that support reconciliation. Moved by trustee L. Harrison, seconded by trustee Danielle. Is there any comments, discussion? Vice Chair colored.
Trustee L. Harrison, you didn't, you were on the list. Okay. Elder Steve Paquette, I heard your beautiful words, and they were good words, and I heard them well, and I thank you so much for coming this evening.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Through you, Chair, I want to thank trustee L. Harrison for bringing forward this motion, and I thank our guest for his words, and I'm humbled, and I thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Danielle.
Thank you. I'd like to echo trustee Oliver's words. Thank you to trustee L. Harrison. This took a lot of work to bring forward, and thank you for bringing it, putting it on our radar and bringing it to us. And thank you, sir, for your words tonight. You inspire and engage and make us want to be better trustees, and I thank you for that. I seconded the motion, I'll obviously be supporting it. I think this is a very important piece of our own legislation that fits in very significantly with what's doing, being done by OPSWA and our commitment to the charter that we did with OPSWA. And OPSWA will be asking for an action plan to go along with that commitment to the charter and along with the position paper created by the First Nations Council to include reconciliation and other First Nation issues as mandatory curriculum items. I see it all as one great big piece, and you found the piece that was lacking locally, and you brought that to us, and you brought it here, and I'm very grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Through you, Madam Chair, I also am really glad that trustee L. Harrison had the time and inclination to pick this up and get it timely. And I also want to thank Elder Paquette for those lovely words. I'm really looking forward to working on this initiative. I was really moved by being involved in some of the program, staff's visits to some of the First Nations. It really affected me, and I've been trying to find ways ever since to deepen that knowledge. I have a little bit more knowledge than some. I'm not exactly sure why. I've been trying to figure out where I learned some of this. But I really hope to help this process. I'm looking forward to the new school. I drove by it. I've already, you know, it's not my ward, but I'm going to adopt it as well. So looking forward to how far we can take this and to launching the next generation with a much better foundation. So really glad to support this.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously. Megwich. And thank you for coming out tonight, Elder Paquette, and thank you Superintendent Obang, and thank you to those in the audience who are supporting this as well. So our next item is the capital priorities report. Superintendent Vermin, but I know she's not going to be here from Newfoundland, and Mr. Renzella, report 15092. Oh, and Superintendent Cullen is going to fill in. Okay. So I will put the motion on the floor, and then any questions? Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board approved the projects as identified in report 15092 to be submitted to the Ministry of Education as part of the request for capital priorities. Moved by trustee Harvey Hope, seconded by trustee Gavence. Is there any discussion on the capital priorities? Do you have any comments to add?
The only comment is, two comments. One, as outlined in the report, the ministry is requesting all the, this, the capital priorities submissions by July 15th, so it's important to have that decision made tonight. And secondly, although we're submitting seven projects, the likelihood of the board getting approval for all seven is not great. So, and at the same time, although we, the board identifies priorities, ultimately the decision rests on the Ministry of Education, and years gone by, they have kind of skipped over our higher priorities and gone to other ones. So they will evaluate everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you, Madam Chair, to Manager Renzella and Superintendent Cullen. Thank you for all the work you're going to do in the next, and have done in order to get this all ready in the timeframe. And I wish us luck, and hopefully we will get the projects that we need. My question is, when you put all this together, if it's possible to give us some feedback later on what the childcare piece looks like in that submission, because we don't have a lot of fleshing out of whether we're talking a couple rooms or a wing, or I don't really have a sense of that. So perhaps once we get the submission, we could have a feedback loop in the fall that says what we actually asked for, so that when people say, so what does that maybe look like, or what did you actually ask for, we have an answer. But I'm really thrilled to see the childcare piece in there, because I live in a neighborhood that happened to have had, at one time, when all the ducks were aligned in the right spots, a school that built a childcare attached to a school. And I can tell you, it makes a big difference having it right there, whether it's the right school board or not, or whether it's, you know, if it's in the neighborhood, that makes a big difference. And so I'm really hoping that maybe that gets some traction with the ministry. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no other speakers. All those in favor. Trustee Danielle and trustee L. Harrison are here, so I'm going to end voting. It doesn't tell me what. Can you see from your end who voted yes and no? I did.
There it is.
Okay, I got it. Thank you. So that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and we know you'll do your best to convince them that all of those items are important, right? Thank you. We know you will, Director Ullli. Okay. So our next item is the draft policy trustee expenses. Trustee Graves, report 15085 on page 33 of your board package. So I will read the motion. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board posts the revised trustee expense policy as appended to report 15085 on the board website for a period of at least 25 days, soliciting public input, and that the policy and any input returned to the board for consideration at the first board meeting in October 2015. Moved by trustee Graves, seconded by trustee Pappen. Is there any discussion on this motion? Doesn't look like it. So... All those in favor. Two still missing. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So the next item is the policy schedule amendment. Trustee Honoria, trustee Graves, report 15086 revised on page 38 of your board package. So I'll read the motion. Be resolved, the Halton District School Board's trustee Honoria policy with reference to the appended schedule, and schedule one is appended to report 15086 be approved with a retroactive effective date of December 1st, 2014. Moved by trustee Graves, seconded by trustee Gavence. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none. All those in favor. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. Continuing along. We are now up to the student trustee reports. Trustee Schneider and Sayhi.
All right. Hello, everyone. So obviously, we don't have too much to report in regards to student voice in the board, but I thought me and Sophie would kind of do like a year in review of what we've done this year. So we began off the year new in our role, not really sure what we wanted to do with student voice in our board, but I think at the end now, looking back, I think we did a pretty good job, and we definitely have found stuff where we want to improve on for next year. And we found a lot of stuff that we did really, really well this year, and so I'll just go through some of that. This year, I think we had about seven student senate meetings in total, and during these student senate meetings, we gave the students who attended the opportunity to listen to speakers from the community. We had speakers from the Halton Learning Foundation, the mental health lead in our board, through Theresa Wilson, the Halton Multicultural Council also came in for a little bit. We had Sean Clark from the technology in our board as well to come and talk to the students about that, and then we had a bunch of discussions as well during every meeting in regards to self-paced learning technology in the classroom and so on. We also successfully put on our 14th Annual Halton Youth Leadership Symposium, which was an absolute success. I shared in college, we had about, I would say, we, 150 attendees, and then we had to add on top of the student senators who were there, and they did an absolutely phenomenal job presenting. In regards to numbers, with our senate meetings, we had 34 elementary schools come, which is about 50% of all the elementary schools in our board, so obviously that's something we want to work on for next year, getting that attendance up. High schools, we did a pretty good job. We had about 12 out of the 17 high schools, which is about a 70%, so I don't know, it's more like a C kind of range, I'm more like the A, so we're going to make sure we move that number up as well. And during every meeting, we had about 70 to 75 students come and attend, so the student voice was well represented during all those meetings. I've learned a lot in my first year here as a student trustee, and it's been a lot of fun coming to these meetings. I've gained fashion advice from our director, and I've learned a bunch of, I don't know, tips and tricks about soccer from our associate director over there, and so it's been an absolute, I guess, fun ride, and I'm looking forward to next year. I would like to thank the directors so much for all your help this year. It's been, you've helped us out so much, especially right from the beginning, and I like to thank you for all your help.
Yeah, I was just going to expand on what our goals were for next year. Since we obviously had our last year in our pockets now, it's a little bit easier to jump straight into next year. So obviously, we want to increase those student senate numbers and really start from now in the summer to getting that all organized and making sure that we have absolute representation in our student senate. And we also wanted to have more of a refiner research project that piloted this year, make sure that's better and improvement for next year, and also making a more accessible way for all students to voice their opinions about what's going on in schools, so we get that accurate and consistent student voice. And that would be through social media and other websites. I was looking to create a new student senate website so that it's really accessible and easy to see what the student senators have done. And also, we were looking to make our conference, our leadership symposium, change it up a bit, make it maybe more specialized, because this year we had a lot of attendance from elementary school students. So obviously, that need is there, and maybe focusing on transitioning from elementary school to high school, which is very hard. And the students seemed, we had a workshop for that, and a lot of students wanted to take that workshop, so we see that need there, and maybe we'll cater more towards that. I want to echo what Jovan said, this year had just been amazing from our many chicken meals to just having fun with all of the trustees. We've both learned a lot from each and every one of you, from our, I want to thank our past trustees as well that we started off the year with, who supported us from the beginning, and the new ones who came in and trusted us as students from the start. That's a lot to ask sometimes, but I'm glad that everybody supported us through everything that we've done. And of course, to our director, we're going to miss you a lot, and we're really happy that you support us so much. We hear sometimes in other boards from across Ontario, they don't get the support that they, that we get in our board, so we're really thankful. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to congratulate you two, because you have brought the student voice to the board, and you've also increased the awareness through the system, and I'd like to thank you for doing that. And I just know, because you've already got the foundation, that your second year is going to be even better. And may I say that the schools that you know didn't participate, maybe you let us know, or Associate Director Miller, I know he's got broad shoulders, and I also know he's got the moves. So he can help you maybe reinforce some message that needs to go out to help advocate for more students from some of the schools that maybe haven't participated as well as they should have. Trustee, oh, Director Ullli first.
Thank you for those wonderful comments, but you did it all yourselves. I didn't do very much at those meetings because I didn't have to. They were very well-run, and they were very engaging. But thanks for the pizza. I always look forward to the pizza at the meeting, and you always ordered too much.
That's because they were hoping for everyone to show up.
We ate it all.
Okay. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the student trustees. First off, you guys have done a wonderful job. It's often that you forget that your students, you just jump in with both feet, and all of your comments are so insightful, and it's been really nice to have your student voice. It's going to be really great to have you on a second year, because there is a learning curve. And sometimes I think it's unfortunate that a student trustee is like a one-year term. And I happen to know that my high school is one of the schools that doesn't know what student senators are. I've had conversations with some of their student council, which is really effective and really well-run, and they have great leaders in the school. I think it's because we're so far away from the board office, they don't really understand I think it's because we're so far away from the board office, they don't really understand what's going on here. So, one, I hope that student senate website is splashy and lots of information, and maybe we need a guide to the student senate, like our guide to the boardroom, because we need to find the students. There are natural leaders in all of these schools, and we need to find them, and I will even potentially offer to drive some of them if that's the problem, but we need to find a way to get there. So I'm wondering whether at some point, the statistics you have of your attendance could be broken down by geography, and I'm wondering whether, I know we have some trouble with the north schools because it's a long way down. I think we have some trouble with the east schools because of the coin Elizabeth parking lot, but it may just, some of it may be awareness, and some of it may be transportation, and we need to figure out sort of what the problem is. I really like the elementary focus, the transition focus. One of the other things that you might think of doing as a one-off or as a kind of a seminar is the other transition, the post-secondary transition. I'm hearing some nightmares from different people about some of that, and I think maybe numbers, and there are a lot of alumni student trustees that would love to give some of their information back, and maybe coming from students to students, they would listen to it better than they do from their parents and their teachers.
Thank you. Trustee Danielle.
Thank you very much. I will make this brief. I have been very fortunate since I began in two thousand and six on and off to be a student trustee mentor, but I have to say this past year has been exceptional. The work that you've done, particularly with your position papers and drawing in the elementary has been extraordinary, and I am so very, very pleased that you will have another year to continue this work, because what you have done has been absolutely amazing. So congratulations to both of you, and give up for next year. And a few former Halton Hills trustees have asked me to, please remind you to remember those from the north and trying to engage them, so I said I would pass that on.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers on this topic, thank you very much for your report, and have a great summer, and I know tomorrow's exam pickup day, so I wish you luck. You don't need luck when you guys studied as hard as you did. I know. Oh, I won't even share what the director's saying. Okay, we're up to notices of motion. Is there any notices of motion tonight? Seeing none? Okay, we have no action items at this moment for our September second board meeting, but that may change. Right now, there's nothing. So we have some information items. So our first one is for administrative building update from superintendent Cullen. Report 15100 on page forty-one of your board package. Welcome, superintendent Cullen, and if you could introduce the other gentleman, that would be appreciated.
I will certainly do that. Thank you, Chair Amos. With me this evening is Doug Snyder. Doug is one of the principal partners in the firm of Snyder Partnership, who has been involved in the construction of many of our schools and renovations of many more, and in fact, is the firm leading up the current study phase of the review of our administrative centers and what we may do in the future. So for a little bit of background for the trustees in regard to how this came to be, many of us have talked for many years about the current situation we have around administrative growth, pressures on the buildings, age of the buildings, the capabilities of the buildings, and so on, and recognizing that it's probably going to be about a five-year process, decide we better get started in this, because somewhere down the road, somebody's gonna want a new board office, and the process of identifying the need, the funding, the location, and what it may actually be, all has to take place before we would actually either renovate, build, or modify whatever we've got. So it is a rather long-term approach. We're at the early phases of it. Doug and his team have been working on reviewing some of the functionality of our current facilities, as well as some of their capabilities, and we've also started to talk about some of the potential future things as to where we might go. So it was timely that we bring a report to the board, update you on the status of the project. We don't want to get too far down the road before we start to turn into developing a plan, if you will, and since work will be continuing over the summer, we thought it was ideal to update the trustees at this point, and then Doug and his team can actually carry on doing some of the work over the summer, and we'll report back in the fall on those findings. The report that you have this evening is prefaced by just my outline of exactly that. Doug and his team have done the report, the bulk of what you see there this evening. There are a number of other reports. We didn't circulate them, but they're more technical in nature because they relate to the condition of either mechanical, electrical, or other features of the building. They're certainly available if anybody's interested in reviewing them. I find them fascinating. Some people in the room may find them a little bit boring, but that's the nature of what we do. So anyway, be happy to take any questions related to the specific report or the status of the overall project, and I don't know if Doug has any comments that he wants to add about process thus far, but they've been doing a fair number of interviews with our staff across the system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Welcome, and did you have anything to add to the report tonight?
Prepared to answer any questions you may have from the process or the outcome.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to say I've sat through a few times when we've looked at different ideas about looking at our long-term office needs, and things have happened to put a stop to them or to create a different path, so I welcome this, because I believe it's time to start exploring, to do something that will also benefit the staff that are actually trying to support the people that are in the schools. So, thank you for doing this. We have some people on the list. Trustee Harvey Hope. I think ten for ten or something tonight, anyway. Thank you, madam speaker, through to superintendent Cullen and our guest. Thank you very much for this report. Again, echoing Chair Amos, I was in the audience or something for the last round, and watch that carefully. I am often amazed at the quality of work we have of our staff with some of where they work. You know, it's hot upstairs and it's cold in the basement, and they have, we're far in need of a revamp on some of this. I really do appreciate the report. I found it very readable. Thank you. I probably will take superintendent Cullen up on his offer to read some of those more technical things. Sure will be pleased to hear that. My question is... The end paragraph on Phase One results says, "Due to lack of specific funding, we're likely to seek solutions that use existing property." I note that Phase Two says, you know, we're gonna figure out a solution, but I'm kind of disappointed that we're already seemingly limiting the solutions. Because I, for one, think that strong corporate staff, space, meeting space, places for the public to come and interact with us is really important, and I'm prepared to fight for all of the staff. I mean, we fight for the students and their schools and their buildings, and we will continue to do that, but our staff need good working conditions as well. So I'm hoping that... Economic reality is reality, but I think we need to try and stretch our thinking and be creative, and, you know, there's property swaps with municipalities, or there's other things that maybe could be in place, and I think we need to keep all our options open and try and come up with a good solution, because it didn't work the last time around, and I'd like to kind of be able to say that we at least launch the project in this term and get it going somewhere along the line, so that we have twenty-first century staff working in twenty-first century facilities. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, madam chair, and thank you, trustee Harvey Hope, for those comments. At this point in time, we haven't closed the door on the land issue, other than in reviewing the lack of funding for the actual construction of the building. We realize that's probably gonna be a challenging enough task to come up with funding for it. Creating a fund, an additional fund to try and acquire land was another concern, but we do have some other options, and I don't know if we've been specific enough. We do have a secondary site in Oakville, we've got a secondary site in Milton, we've got, I'll say, a joint-use site in the Milton area with the provincial schools, so there are some other options where they're not necessarily administrative functions right now, but we may be able to, if we had a strong enough case, to demonstrate the need for a new building and location size and whatnot, that we might be able to do something further with that, but I do appreciate those comments, and we haven't really closed that door, but it is just, we want to give you the heads up, that's the direction we've been starting to think because of the, I'll say, two-pronged approach of land and building. Might be too daunting for us, but still on the books. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, trustee Harvey Hope very nicely echoed my sentiments. I'll pass. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Yes, through the chair, I just wanted to make note of on page seven of the report, the indication from the lessons learned from the new Hamilton Wentworth District School Board Education Center, the concepts of the four principles upon which it was built, being a collaborative space, welcoming, flexible, and having maximum exposure to natural light. I believe several of the trustees here tonight have had the opportunity and privilege to have actually been in the new Hamilton Wentworth Board of Education Center, and I think all of us would echo much as what is reported here, that it's an absolutely fabulous facility, and it lends itself to, I guess, that movement forward in new building concepts, probably lending themselves to creative and fascinating work with a collaborative culture. The light airiness of the building, the top-to-bottom windows, all of those aspects, to me, made me feel that it would be a very warm and welcoming building, and that I like the fact that since this is the last, or the most recent, rather, new board office that's been built, I like the fact that we've had a chance to visit it, look at all the great things that have been incorporated in their design, but also look at the potential and what it could recognize for us. If this building process was ever to be approved, and if we're looking at a five-year time span, what might our building incorporate five years from now? What may be the new concepts in building, in the building industry that, I guess, support collaborative work and good office working environments? So kudos to the group working on this. We look forward, I'm sure, as a whole board of trustees, along with all the members of the folks that work in our buildings, our administrative offices, we look forward to the future work of this group, and five years can't go quick enough. Thank you.
And seeing no further speakers, I was happy to hear superintendent Cullen mention the fact that maybe some partnerships could happen with some of the new secondary schools be built as a joint project, because I know we already have some joint projects within the board with Hayden, and so there are that kind of potential, because we do have some sites, I know in Oakville and in Milton, that may work for that type of thing as well. So, thank you very much, and thank you very much, Mr. Schneider, for coming out tonight. I'm sorry we taxed you so hardly with the questions we asked, but thank you for coming out, and thank you for the report. Thank you.
So our next item is Administrative Procedures Update. Director Uwali, report 15101. Director Uwali.
Thanks. Thank you, Chair Pearson. This is part of our monthly report on administrative procedures they have brought to the board for information, where and where there are significant changes, the entire document is included in the package. This is the English-as-a-second-language administrative procedure, and it does have significant changes, and therefore it's appended, and I think the associate director in the absence of superintendent can answer questions if there are any.
Are there any questions or comments tonight? Trustee Harvey Hope.
I have, through you, madam chair, to the director. I had a question about process, not about content. This particular admin procedure is already posted, as far as I can tell, because I was looking for the old one to tell the differences, and I was like, oh, well, that's the new one, which is amazing, but I couldn't, I now can't find the old one to see what had been changed. The effective date is still September two thousand and two, and so if we have a brand-new revision, and it's thirteen, anyway, and there's no revision history, so I didn't know whether or not we were putting revision history into admin procedures, and if not, then could we at least make sure the effective date is, say, now, if we're putting it into place now?
Go ahead. I'll answer.
Through you, madam chair, to trustee Harvey Hope. Our past practice has been that the admin procedures are in effect continuously, so while they're, in some cases, when the procedure is new, we would change the effective date because of the creation of that document, making it a new effective date. When the existing admin procedure continues on with revisions, its effective date is at the origin of that document, not at the origin of a revision.
Go ahead. There's no way to tell this has been revised. So if you're gonna have an effective date of two thousand and two, and it continues, and it's a significant enough revision that it needs to come in its entirety to the board, then at least we need a revision date line, because nobody knows to go look at it, nobody knows that it's changed. And then my other question is, has this been circulated or at least notified to CAC and PIC in that this is a particular admin procedure that directly affects parents' interaction with the board? So they need to be able to know, I mean, it's great that it's in this package, but most people don't read the line that says admin procedures and go look at what's there. So is there a way to make sure that the fact that, and I can, because I don't know what's changed, I don't know how significant it is in order to bring people's attention to the fact that it's changed, how we get that communicated?
Thank you for the question to the trustee through the chair. It would be our normal practice that anything that affects students in special education would be brought to them at a special education CAC meeting, but unfortunately, this was done post the last meeting of CAC, so it will be on the agenda for the next CAC meeting. In general, parents don't read our administrative procedure out of interest. They read it when they have a question about a process, so it's probably more significant for them to read the current practice than the past practices of the board. And I don't, we wanted also to point out, the most significant part of this that is brand-new is something that we are celebrating, and that is the concept of a welcome center. So I'm gonna ask the associate director to speak specifically about the welcome center part of the administrative procedure.
Through you, Chair Amos. The welcome center, I have mentioned it briefly, I have briefly mentioned it before at this table, but the welcome center, and this is important for you, put October twenty-fourth in your calendar, that will be our official opening of the welcome center. It's... I don't know what the date, that day is. Oh, yeah, it is a Saturday, and it's going to be a Saturday because it's about families. Tell me. It's what? Alright, you know what? So take it out of your calendars, and I will go back to our committee to see if we can change that date. Okay? So let's rewind and forget those few minutes that I was just speaking. No, thanks for pointing that out, but we'll get it sorted. But I will briefly tell you what the welcome center is. It's already actually up and running. For next year, it'll be primarily serving secondary school students. We have a full-time ELL assessor there, we have a couple secretarial staff, we're currently getting a bunch of our materials translated into various languages. We met yesterday with our communications department, Marnie Denton, to start figuring out the communications for that. The intent is, and it'll go this way, is that sometime next year, but if not next year, the following year, it will also have elementary ELL assessors there as well. So the practice for September is, will be the same for elementary students, they go to their school, but secondary students, all ELL students will be directed to the welcome center. If they have siblings in elementary school, we will do the assessment there with them. And the big grandiose plans is that it becomes an all-welcoming center, and our hope is that at some point, we can combine with the Center for Skills and Development, and it serves newcomer families, and there'll be opportunities... serves newcomer families, and there'll be opportunities for adults, the parents, the kids, and so that's the intent behind that, and that's the direction we're heading. We will also be serving all of our international students up there, they too will go there, and if they need assessment, they'll be assessed, and then they'll be directed to the schools in which that they will attend. And on that note, a few weeks ago, I was asked a question about international students, and we said our intent is to start increasing that number of international students. At that time, we had close to 240, we've got 290 coming in in September, which is the target, in fact, it's a little above the target we were looking for for this September, September 2015, 2016, we hoped to maybe double that number, so. So that's what the welcome center is, so I kind of combined two little things there, one of which is not related to the procedure around the numbers of international students, but I thought you might be interested, so I thought I'd throw it in. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Gobins.
Through you Chair, I actually, going back to what trustee Harvey Hope was saying, I think that we should actually have, not a, I don't feel that a full history is necessary, but just the most recent revision date, just because if I looked at it two weeks ago, I think I know the procedure, and then all of a sudden, oh no, I don't actually know the procedure because it's changed, and I don't know that it's changed.
So it's been already mentioned that it's going to be changed, they'll have a revision on it.
Oh, okay, I guess I was flaking it.
Thank you.
Is that the end of the, thank you. So we're up to committee reports, are there any committee reports tonight? You have to sign in. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, the Center for Skills and Development is very happy to announce that they have hired a new CAO, Jason Linton, starts on July 20th.
That's wonderful. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you, just wanted to say that the Joint Health and Safety Committee met last week, and as always, it was a lively conversation about how to keep staff safe in their working environment. We have an active list of meetings next fall, I'm going to put them all on the trustee calendar, so that nobody books another meeting for me and causes a conflict. And also wanted to say that I think we have really good staff that are really dedicated to making it the best place to work in Halton, so I just wanted to say that I really notice it's an interesting environment, that you get to see different things and talk about different stuff, and they're now starting to ask me directly as the trustee questions, so although I do try to stay quiet, I get asked direct questions. In the terms of reference, there is a requirement to circulate all the minutes to the trustees after they're approved, so you'll note that you recently received by email the latest round, if by any chance you ever want to look them up, they're also inside my HDSB. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other committee reports tonight? Seeing none, we're up to the director's report.
Thank you Chair Pearson, just one good news item to report tonight, and it's concerning to an individual who was at this meeting, it's recognition of Nick Bertrand and Carrie Sagard of our program department, they recently received the Conservation Halton Award. This award was uniquely presented to Carrie and Nick jointly because of the exceptionally effective way they have worked together on environmental and social justice issues, so I'm very pleased to report that.
That's wonderful. Do you have anything else?
This is my report for tonight.
And he was hoping it was his last report, but it's not going to be, so. Okay, we're up to communications from the chair. I have a couple things, the first thing is a report on, "The Halton District School Board has engaged the Phelps Group to assist in the recruitment of the next Director of Education for the Board, and the process is going well. Consultation with trustees, system administrators, school leaders, teaching and support staff, student and community leaders, and partners explored the perspectives of individuals and groups on the strengths of the Halton District School Board, and the challenges and opportunities of the Board that they're currently experiencing. Commentary has also been sought on the characteristics and competencies people see as essential in selected candidate. An electronic survey has been made available to stakeholders, staff, and students to seek further input. Opportunity to provide input to this survey will conclude tomorrow morning, Thursday, June 25th. The advertisement for this position actually went live yesterday, and will run for several weeks with the board, making a decision during the summer about the candidates whom they will interview for the position. It is anticipated the final selection will be completed by the middle of September. The Board is confident a dynamic and innovative leader will be chosen to lead the Halton District School Board. That report is also, you can be found under the trustee and boardroom link, so that the public is aware of our process. So, and I'd also like to remind the public that if they want to have some input, there are four questions that are available under that same link until tomorrow morning, so. The other piece is, because we will not be actually doing the interviews and making an offer until September, we will have to extend our current director's contract, no?
I mean, you can treat it a higher rate.
So anyways, the director will be with us for the month of September. So I believe that's all I have at the moment, we're up to trustees' comments and questions. And just a reminder, we will be reconvening into private after. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you Chair, I just wanted to let my fellow trustees know that I have the honor of attending two graduations tomorrow, one at Garth Webb Secondary School, and that will be their first commencement, and one at Abbey Park High School, so I'm very much looking forward to that and bringing greetings from the board.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
I just wanted to note that our next board meeting is currently scheduled for the first Wednesday of September, which is occurring before school commences, and I would like the board to consider over the summer moving that to the 9th of September, so that we're sure that everyone is home from their summer vacations, and that school has actually started before we have our first meeting, so just wanted to request your consideration on that.
Thank you. Trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you very much, just one elaboration, I guess, on good news from last week, when we talked about our ECO schools certification, and Oakwood Public School, which is in, where it's 1 and 2, Oakville, is the top Halton ECO school for this year, and they scored a perfect 100 on their certification process, so it's a small but mighty school with a heck of a lot of heart, and a lot of that heart goes towards their ECO initiatives throughout all the grades, and in celebration, they got to pose with the Stanley Cup, so that's pretty cool, too, yeah, it's a way to go, Oakwood.
Nice. If they waited that long, they'd never get to have a picture. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, I just wanted to let you know that I had the pleasure of attending the Special Athletes Track Meet last Friday, and was an official starter, which was so much fun, but I just wanted to give a shout-out, I was really overwhelmed by the efforts of staff, I know there was students from other schools, they were called ambassadors, that helped out and helped a lot of the races, all the parents, I couldn't, I was so overwhelmed at the number of volunteers, and of course, our CAC Chair Denise Nassev had orchestrated the Optimist Club, providing us lunch for the day, which was outstanding, so you know, I was so, I was so overwhelmed and grateful for having that opportunity, and I was so proud that our board does that. Thank you.
I have to mention that the trustee's a great not untire, we have to untie a bunch of tape measures, and they were, they looked like my Christmas, outdoor Christmas lights.
I see no other speakers to the questions and comments. I was going to acknowledge that trust, or Superintendent O'Bang was, this was actually his last meeting, but I guess he's already gone, so he's left the building, and I wanted to, I wanted to acknowledge that this is also Jeff Bowman's last meeting, and he said he was gonna come up and do a soft shoe for us, you changed your mind. But I'd like to thank him very much, and wish him all the best on his retirement, and thank you for all that you've done for the students and staff of the board. Thank you Jeff. And see, I didn't make you come up in front of the camera, you should have, and I didn't cry, not yet. Okay, I'd like to thank the two gentlemen, the press, or the media, for being here tonight, and I now need, and I would like to wish everyone a wonderful summer break, and I hope everybody has a health, happy, healthy time with their families. So can I now have a motion to rise into private? Trustee Gobins and trustee Gray, all those in favor, that passes unanimously.
Thank you, we're now in private session, and we will take a five-minute recess.